I was just gonna ask, I mean, this is the same general area.
St. George, and there will be some moving of wires. There are two holes over there, they'll be moved from the south side to the north side. So it's all in conjunction.
But I think the question that John was asking, or at least the one I'm asking, is, whatever timeframe the Eversource project is going to take, is this added to it? Is this additional time that the roads are gonna close?
It's inclusive, this is all within the project.
Yes. It's within the same time.
Yep. So Sean's not as involved with the main Eversource project, he's mostly been involved with the other projects. So I'll step in and help talk here with this one. We've worked with Eversource to let them know that if there is any road closures that would generally route traffic through, they are aware of this and that we can't have a detour turning into another detour to where there's no way to get through. So we've coordinated the two projects together and that's how we've done that.
Is this going to extend the time, though? Have the roads are closed or detours are in place?
No, no. They're two separate projects and the Eversource project really doesn't stretch down this far. It goes Indian Harbor over to Museum Drive for that portion. So this is further down.
Doesn't quite hit this.
Yeah, it doesn't get down into the same section.
Can I ask another question which I think is directed to Sean?
Yes.
You talked about eighty-three bridges that you're responsible for.
Right.
This is a four. Is that the worst that we have and are there other fours?
That is the worst that we have.
Okay. Other fours?
There's a few other fours, yes. But of those other ones that are currently rated four, we're in the process, they're either in design or in construction at the moment, so.
So some are in construction?
Some are in construction. Some are just finished construction and we haven't got a new rating on them.
Right.
They generally will rate them once a year, once every two years. So we haven't gotten the new inspections done on those to give them a different rating. But for instance, Baileywick and Roundhill Road were two of those that were at that lower level. And then we have a couple other ones that are at the four level but we're in the design process and they're on the cap build plan for future years as, you know, we proceed forward.
How do you characterize or describe the level of danger that a bridge is at at four, at three, at five, at two? You don't want it to get to zero, I suppose, so.
So the one through nine bridge rating system is the National Federal Highway Rating System. So the way that that works is each bridge has certain categories of the bridge. So there's the deck, but then there's like approach roadway. There's if there's guide rail coming into it or not. All those things factor into the overall rating of the bridge. Sometimes what we will run into in Greenwich is because some of these bridges are historic, they're on these older roads, then there's maybe a driveway right next to a bridge where we can't do the proper protection. We can't get it all the way up to a nine, even when it's brand-new built, because there's gonna be some categories that are just not going to allow us to meet the full standard of what we're supposed to meet. But in general, I think a one is failure, meaning a bridge isn't there anymore. So that's... A four is what they consider poor condition, but it's still drivable. We do inspections, if we know that there's heavier truck traffic or something, we may do a further inspection on the load rating. And sometimes we will post those or we will put certain restrictions on the roads to do that. So it's a, you know, as it being a four, it's something that there should be a concern of people driving across it today, but if it continues, it can deteriorate to that point, kind of.
So how many are at four that aren't yet?
Very few. We've been very few.
Five, two, one, ten?
I'd have to look at the list, I think there's less than five.
Less than five, I think it's four.
Yeah.
I have a question. Looking at the map and knowing the area, aside from this main entrance off of Oneida, is there another access point for people to get to? I see this, yeah, I see this line here, it says Lakewood Central that is Oneida. Does that provide emergency service access as well or is that limited? In terms of this section right here?
Emergency access will be provided through the union office.
Okay, so. And I know you have on your notes that you'll notify them two weeks in advance, but I'm just concerned about alternate access.
The secondary access to that neighborhood is right next to the Davis Avenue Bridge over there near the entry to Bruce Park. That is a fenced gated entrance because that's a private road at that section. What we've stated is if there will still be emergency access coming down Indian Harbor Drive to that entrance point. In the event that there's a high tide event, we will work with the association to get that back entrance opened up as an emergency access point. We have a couple of those, like for instance Baileywick, when we were, we have an access point over there through the Baileywick Club that during emergency events when the Byron River may have an opportunity to flood, we have to open that back gate in preparation for that. So we are working with the association on that basis of secondary access points.
It seems to present a little bit more challenging scenario versus Baileywick because Baileywick came in through a primary public road, Angeles versus what this appears to be. That's why I was asking, having just had one of the fire trucks zoom by me on Route 1. They're big and that's the entry point, I'm just wondering.
It's a full-size access point.
Okay.
Do you know if the people in Indian Harbor Association were able to get their concerns to you? Because I know they were concerned with Walter Rata and.
Yes, and we asked them, that's all.
And then just as a final point, I think saying this question was an important one. Knowing the overlapping work, if there's going to be any with Eversource, because that, it's like the epicenter for a major part of the project is the Davis Ave. And as long as they're not overlapping for an extended period of time, it'd be a concern I have.
I'm sure.
So I do keep, one of my fun tasks that I do every, once a week is have a meeting with Eversource on the transmission project. So we're doing a project status meeting once a week on that project. We're gonna keep up to speed on that. Primarily the area on Museum Drive and down Arch Street that would lead into this neighborhood. All that work for Eversource is night work as well, so that also helps with. And they have to have it reopened at the end of their evening, so.
This is day work?
This would be day work, but this bridge will be closed completely when the detour put in place during.
Any questions? Don't have a guess, John. If it's a federal rating system, did they make the determination or do you make it on your own?
So it's a federal rating system. For this specific bridge, the town hires an independent third-party consultant to do these ratings for us.
Okay.
Some, the bridges that are over twenty feet, which we have thirty of those about in town, those are rated by the state and they have a independent consultant that works for the state that goes out and rates these, that they're rating all the bridges in the whole state. But these, we hire an independent consultant. And the town's done a decent job of putting together a program where all of our under twenty bridges, we get a rating on every five years unless we've noticed that there's additional deterioration, we do it more frequently than.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Not an entertaining motion to approve the detour and road closure for Oneida Drive bridge replacement.
Second.
With that objection. Ken, do you want this copy of the detour map?
Okay, proceeding to the first item that was listed on our agenda, the municipal improvement to approve the redevelopment agreement between the Town of Greenwich and Greenwich Plaza, Inc., pursuant to Town Charter. I think Mr. Brannion's gonna take us through this, but just for clarification for the board, this is a multi-phase project in terms of the town's governing bodies reviewing it. One area that is exclusively within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the second piece has engagement on the part of the Board of Selectmen. And by initiative, we've also included the BET, but by requirement, the RTM. So today, we're going to hear about that second piece, which requires Board of Selectmen approval, but we're also gonna hear about the whole project in its totality. So Mr. Brannion, who's our town administrator, has been working on behalf of the town, coordinating all the various elements of this in addition with town planning. So, and the final thing I'd say is we, while not required to, we have adopted during my time, a process where we have substantive requests from municipal improvement to hear them at one meeting and then vote on them at a subsequent meeting. If it's a minor issue, it's, we tend to waive that, but I think by nature, most things have the interest that we take to meetings of yours. So this will be one of those.
Good morning, everyone. So in front of you, there's a hundred and ninety-nine page document. So I've missed on the next ten to fifteen minutes to orient you on that document. The history of the current agreement, as well as some highlights of what we're trying to do. I'll then turn the presentation over to Daryl Harvey, who's the co-CEO of the Ashford Company. He'll introduce his project team, explain in greater detail the features of the redevelopment project. And after both of those presentations, I'd love to open up for a Q and A. And lastly, I'd just like to introduce to my right, we have Town's outside council that we've engaged, David Worson from Coen and Wolf. I've been working with him since December of last year. We engaged him with his services and he's been instrumental in helping crafting the document and also protecting the town's interests and engage other consultants so we can have our decisions fully informed when we put this document together. And so the orientation of the document, we wanted it to be a completely standalone document, so that and all the relevant materials attached. That drives the size of the hundred and ninety-nine pages, which has over twelve exhibits. Although I would encourage you to read the whole document, it's a great beach read. Would direct you to a couple of, a couple relevant sections. The first twenty-one pages is the agreement itself. The whereas clauses, the first four pages, they provide a very nice summary of the overall project and history. Exhibit E is the town's appraisal that we have done, which does the net present value of the air rights from 2018 to 2057. Then they add the reversionary value of the asset to get to an overall value, which produced an overall value of nine point nine million, which is the asset that the town has, which is triggering the municipal improvement in front of you. We also included exhibit F, which is the appraisal done by Cushman Wakefield, which is the appraisal firm engaged by Ashworth Company. They followed a similar methodology, different assumptions. They came up with a value of just over seven million. But we wanted both of those in the overall document. And another document is exhibit G, which is the joint operation and maintenance agreement. Where here, we've outlined roles and responsibilities of who's responsible for some of the public benefit improvements. And I'll get into greater detail, but in a nutshell, we were able to negotiate who's responsible, is the town's not responsible for the overall maintenance of the public benefits going forward. We'd like just to give a very quick overview of the existing partnership that we have, so we'll call it the current state. Now, orient you to the map that we have up here. There is an exhibit B in your document that shows a similar layout. I feel this one here gives a little more detail, but it shows you the buildings. So I'll point you to the map up here. So in nineteen sixty-seven, the town and Greenwich Plaza signed an agreement of lease and conveyance. That entire lease is in exhibit C of the document. So Greenwich Plaza conveyed a portion of the property south of parcel four to the town. There's this piece right here, we call track one, the dotted line. So we call parcel two here, this is what is currently owned by Greenwich Plaza. The town owned and currently owns track two and owns at nineteen sixty-seven, track three. Part of the deal in nineteen sixty-seven is Greenwich Plaza conveyed this dotted piece that we're calling track three to the town. So today, the town owns this piece, south. Greenwich Plaza owns this piece. What they happened is we had the air rights. So Greenwich Plaza leased air rights above the entire section of parcel four. And the air rights is defined as eight foot, one inch above the, above the mean ground. So essentially, two feet above me is where we consider the air rights. The town maintained and still maintains both the land and the airspace below the entire section of parcel four. After that agreement was signed, Greenwich Plaza developed this section. You have the dark green here is one Greenwich Plaza, which is their office complex. And the other dark section here is two Greenwich Plaza, again, their office complex. But this light green color is the parking garage, which the office complexes are built on. Greenwich Plaza can convey to the town an easement to maintain parking on their property. So what we call A-level parking. You can see the parking lot spans both parcel two, which is owned by Greenwich Plaza, and parcel four, which is owned by Greenwich Plaza. For discussion purposes, it's, we've been saying about fifty-fifty. So fifty percent of the buildings are in the airspace that we rent to Greenwich Plaza and fifty percent of the parking space is in the property owned by Greenwich Plaza. So this nineteen sixty-seven lease created what we have in front of you today. So for the first thirty years of the lease, so nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen ninety-seven, the lease said that the air rights rent was gonna be forty-two hundred dollars a year. Then there's provision in the lease agreement on the methodology used to reset the lease, the value of that. So the first term was for thirty years, the second term was for another, was for twenty years. So from nineteen ninety-seven to 2017, the rent was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand per year. And that's a function of the appraised value of the air rights times five point seven five percent, got you the math of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. In 2017, the rent reset yet again. We just concluded that that process where we had two independent appraisals came through, function of the lease. The lease going forward is just under two hundred and twenty-one thousand. Again, that's a function of the appraised value of the air rights of five point seven five percent. So from 2017 to 2037, as it stands today, the town will receive an annual rent payment of just under two hundred and twenty-one thousand. There is an option in the lease from 2037 to 2057 that they can renew the rent payment for the air rights. That value is to be determined at the time of that 2037. The change in the lease requires that the value would go from five and three-quarters to six percent of the appraised value. The issue that we have before us is what happens in the ninetieth year of the lease when their option is not, it stops at ninety, the lease stops at ninety years. So 2057 is the decision point. And in the lease, it talks about, there's an offer for Greenwich Plaza to purchase the air rights or there's an option to terminate, the agreement terminates. And it reads the title to improvements erected in the air rights. Again, and these are best to the town. So again, we talk about two buildings that are split, again, for discussion purposes, a fifty-fifty. The issue we have before you, that the lease has no indication of how the ownership or management of the structure of the buildings, particularly the parking garage, how does that look or operate at the expiration of 2057? There's also uncertainty in the entire complex, causing financial loss both to the town and to Greenwich Plaza, which will increase over time as the expiration of the lease approaches. As we sit today, the town is harmed by decreased property tax values. Because of the uncertainty related with the expiration of 2057, the town successor has already applied a two percent impairment to the value of the current property. That two percent impairment in 2015, when it was first set in, has a value of approximately six million dollars removed from the grant list because of this uncertainty. It is anticipated that that impairment is continuing to grow. At every rebuild, it will grow potentially exponentially, get closer to 2057, given the uncertainty. Of course, Greenwich Plaza also has, is harmed by the increased cost due to the difficulty obtaining financing of property improvements. They also have a steady reduction in the value of their office building, potentially disincentive to invest in a wasting asset and eventually, the difficulty of leasing space in the office building as the expiration of the lease approaches. So that's where we're at today with the agreement. Again, I'll, I try to do a summary of the lease agreement in exhibit C. So the partnership that we're looking forward into is a new public-private partnership where we want to redevelop the train station and the surrounding area. Ashford, the Greenwich Plaza owns parcel one up here. The entire parcel one where you have existing parking here, retail. The train station, it's one of the very few train stations in the state of Connecticut that's privately owned. So they own the train station, operate the, maintain that train station. Of course, the Metro North and then the retail and the theater here. What they unveiled on Thursday and what's in front of you today is a forty-five million dollar investment, which includes the instruction of several public benefit improvements, which has a value of fifteen million. Also has new luxury movie theaters above the existing parking lot. They also have modernized retail. I'll let Daryl and his team go into the greater detail of that project. But the funding of the project, it includes the investment by the town and the two leases, the two appraisals we talked about in the exhibits, between seven and ten million. So those are the two different values placed on the value of the asset that the town owns. So the town has an appraisal that says the asset value is ten million, is about ten million dollars. That'll be our investment into this project from the partnership perspective, through the transfer of the town-owned air rights to Greenwich Plaza at the completion of the project, where Greenwich Plaza is investing the total forty-five billion in construction costs and they're funding the project exclusively. We're funding it through investment of our air rights. So pending various approvals from, I guess, as Peter mentioned, between the Board of Selectmen, the BET and the RTM, and also the land use approval process and permitting, it's anticipated that construction will begin fall/winter of 2020, with an anticipated completion in the summer of 2022. So the fifteen million dollar public benefit improvements, the construction of a new station has a value of about ten million dollars from a public benefit improvement. That new station, again, Daryl's team will go into greater detail, be a complete rebuild on the north side. On the south side, there will be a new south side station. There is currently no south side station exists here, so a building will be erected on the south side for train, commuter, residents and usage of the train station. That has a value of about two point seven million. They also, we do an expanded and improved drop-off and pickup areas on both sides, both stations. Those costs and those improvements are already embedded into the previous numbers I gave you for the station cost. We also have new pedestrian and commuter pathways and staircases on the north side. And also, where the current theater is in this corner, there'll be a new privately-owned public space. That's the fancy term for a park, although it's not a town park. It's privately-owned property that will be used as a park and part of the agreement will, is, the role's responsibility is captured in that maintenance agreement. That has a cost of about two point three million. So you add all those improvements up, it's fifteen million. And I recognize as I'm talking about these improvements, I'm not doing them justice until you see the pictures, but I just wanted to lay the foundation of some of the benefits that the town is engaging with the public benefit. Very quickly on some of the agreement and the highlights. The current agreement, the nineteen sixty-seven one, remains in full force and effect until the construction is complete, which includes approvals and certificate of occupancy. After the construction is complete, the existing lease and conveyance agreement will be terminated. That language is in exhibit J. Again, after construction, the town will then convey the air rights to Greenwich Plaza. That's exhibit K. At the same time, when those are gone, we'll execute exhibit I, which is a perpetual easement that Greenwich Plaza will be granted to the town to maintain and operate the municipal lot or the meter lot, parking A, the parking lot. In addition, we've been able to negotiate, the current nineteen sixty-seven agreement said that they've capped their expense reimbursement to the town, so the town manages, operates all the parking permits at Greenwich Plaza. And the nineteen sixty-seven agreement had a value of, we'll reimburse the town up to five hundred dollars for the expenses of doing that, that's in nineteen sixty-seven. What we're able to negotiate now is five percent of the annual receipts that we pay to Greenwich Plaza, because it's a profit share in there, has a value of about twelve thousand dollars. It'll reimburse the town for expenses related to processing the permits and managing the parking spots. And the joint operating agreement, we talked about the exhibit G. As I mentioned earlier, Greenwich Plaza is responsible, added sole cost and expense for the maintenance and repair. We've also worked out an agreement that the same occurs at the train station. Right now, there's a little bit of sharing between who maintains the elevator at the railroad station. The town currently does. We've clarified that, that Greenwich Plaza will maintain all of the operating expenses to maintain the both stations for the town. And going forward, we're able to negotiate that Greenwich Plaza will reimburse the town for expenses related to the consultant to review the estimated range. So right now, we're operating off of an estimated number of fifteen million dollars as the aggregate cost of the public benefit improvements. We're gonna, the town will be engaged in an outside consultant to work with their construction companies and vendors and architects and engineers to verify that fifteen million is verified from our perspective. Although we will have the contract engage the vendor, the vendor will work for us. The ultimately, Greenwich Plaza will ultimately reimburse the town for that expense. There's also provisions in the agreement, if it's approved, that the town will engage a construction consultant to assist with the review of the cost allocation and the costs associated with all the public benefit improvements. Again, to have somebody with the town's interest to review the bidding documents. Again, that'll be, those costs will be reimbursed by Greenwich Plaza, but with the contract held by the town to protect our interest. And lastly, if the actual cost of the public benefits is less than the appraised value, so again, we've talked about the public benefits at the fifteen million dollar number. We have appraised value, for discussion purposes, just under ten million. If the overall public benefits come in less than the ten million, whatever that difference is, Greenwich Plaza will. is, uh, Greenwich Plaza will, will pay the town that, that difference, uh, to make, to make a hole at the cost of the ten million dollar appraisal value. So we've tried to protect ourselves from the, the top end with the consultant to verify the numbers, and a consultant to verify the, the cost allocation during the bidding process, and the auditing function at the end of the project, but also protected us in case of numbers, the whole total of public benefit is below our appraised value, will still be made a hole on the asset in front of us. Couple comments that came up earlier, just wanted to highlight that this agreement, on this side, these two buildings here, the existing Greenwich Plaza buildings, besides the new south side station, train station, and improvements to drop off and pickups, there is no other improvements, enhancements, or conditions provided, or given to the two office buildings as part of this agreement. So it's, it's exclusively on the improvements that they're making here, but there's no enhancements that, that town is, they're asking for in order to town giving them for additional utilization for the two existing buildings. Now last, another piece in the agreement is both the town and Greenwich Plaza will use our best efforts to jointly work with Connecticut DOT and Metro North, to have both DOT and Metro North improve the platforms, the canopies, the overpass, and other improvements. Those are not part of this agreement, because those, those amenities, if you will, the station, uh, earn the care, custody, and control of those two agencies, not of the town. But we certainly recognize when you're making this level of investment in the entire area that, well, just as you do a home remodel project, you, you do one area, then something else will pop. We recognize that the canopies, the cross, the crosswalks, and the platforms will, in the current state, will, will look even more higher, higher, but we will be working with both of those agencies to accelerate their capital improvement plan, hopefully, hopefully coincide with this project. For a budget impact, we're able to negotiate that the town's budget regarding the lease payments will have a hold harmless provision for five years following the closing date. So just as a reminder, we talked about the, the air rights used to be a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, now it's up to just like a two hundred and twenty-one thousand. That money is, is budgeted as a revenue line item in the parking services department. So the concern is if the air rights go away, you're creating a budget hole, uh, because the lease payment goes away, we're able to negotiate a hold harmless for five years. The hold harmless is, is important, because the operating, long-term, it's anticipated that the assessed value of this, of the investment will increase for both the Greenwich office building, again, remember, the, the two percent impairment will, will go away. The new tax growth based from that, plus with the new movie theater and the retail spaces, as well as the surrounding areas, the grand list growth should exceed the lost air rights of revenue. If it doesn't occur that way, we do have a five-year hold harmless, where from a cash flow perspective, they'll hold the town in a neutral, neutral position. When I look at the budgets for the out-years, that doesn't become into play until four years, four fiscal years out. So from my math, it's really, you're talking the potential of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So the fiscal year we just started, fiscal year nineteen twenty, there's, there's no change, we actually budgeted a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, we now know the number will be two hundred and twenty, the parking services fund will have, have a positive revenue stream there. Again, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there's no change, twenty-one, twenty-two, again, with the construction, there's no change. The, the first opportunity where the hold harmless would be potentially triggered is in, is in four fiscal years out, twenty-two, twenty-three, and at that point, the town's unprotected for the next five years, no hold harmless. So you really have until twenty, fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, when the, the hold harmless goes away, but you have seven years prior to that, that would have additional grand list, uh, growth, which should far exceed the potential losses of revenue. So the process, uh, very quickly, is the town engaged three outside consultants, I've already introduced you to David Morrison from Cohen and Wolf. Uh, we've also worked with our law department for final review. Uh, we also engaged CBRE for the appraisal that we have. We also worked with Thai Bond for zoning report to help determine the highest and best use of the, of the track two or track three when, when we evaluate the rent schedule. In addition, we've been working closely with the land use departments, particularly, uh, town planner Katie DeLuca on the project, and coordinating the approval schedule. Uh, but if we put, put together the schedule, sometimes it's the logistics of the government boards is, was more complicated than this deal, sometimes it's just trying to schedule the work, uh, make sure we can get a, a pilot approval path going forward. So as today, this is the first time you're, you're, you're hearing this project, this is an introduction, uh, we will be requesting your action at your next regular scheduled meeting, which is July twenty-third. Uh, the two requests that we'll be asking again is the municipal improvement, but also making a recommendation that the redevelopment agreement, uh, to be approved by the RTM. Again, the RTM has the, the final, uh, and ultimate say on, on the redevelopment agreement, and the MI is with, is with you. The planning and zoning commission has scheduled a special meeting on July thirtieth, uh, to, and they have several other future meetings to render a decision on the MI, as well as the preliminary site plan and other approvals required. Uh, we have been scheduled on the BET, uh, their law committee on, on this coming Monday, uh, the budget committee on this coming Wednesday, and the full BET on the, on following Monday. And we are working towards, uh, a submission to the RTM at their September meeting, again, if all of the other, uh, board and commissions, uh, see it favorable to moving forward. Uh, because this is a living document, we anticipate several changes, I just wanted to point out, there's already two changes that are, will be needed in the document before you. Uh, so on page fifteen of the agreement, bottom of the page, section nine point one, brokers, as we were reviewing this, uh, one more time, we, we added additional language. So the last line, after the word party will, we need to add the words, to the fullest extent permissible by law. We'll make sure to get the, an updated version of this, but we had that change.
And, and can you repeat that?
So at, right after the word party will, add, to the fullest extent permissible by And we found the first, and I, I probably say many typos, but there's always typos, we found the first typo, page seventeen of exhibit E. It's immaterial to the calculation, but nonetheless, it's, it's narrative should be corrected. So page seventeen, exhibit E, which is the CBRE, the town's appraisal. Top of the page, second line, in the middle, it has the, the percentage, three percent. The three should read two, and when you change the two, that number then supports to page fifteen, where we show the two percent is the sales, the sale cost. So we used the correct math in the spreadsheet, just the narrative had a different percent sale cost. Again, it does not change your overall value, just the narrative. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Daryl Harvey, again, our, the co-CEO of Ashford Company, who'll walk through introduction to his team and the project.
Thanks, uh, thanks very much, Ben. Good morning. Ben mentioned I'm co-CEO of the Ashford Company, uh, with the, uh, on Greenwich Plaza, which owns, uh, the, uh, the entire, uh, complex, and I'm co-CEO with, uh, Andrew Ashford, my first cousin, so, uh, all members of the family were, a lot of whom were present at the press conference room when it was there on, on Monday. We view this proposed project as a tremendous opportunity for our, what we call our continuing public-private partnership, because so many things that Ben described in nineteen sixty-seven that took place with land swaps and, uh, uh, joint operations of the garage, and the air rights, and dealing with the station and all that, um, it's been around, been close to fifty years. As I said, because the agreement was done, uh, back in sixty-seven, we completed the project in nineteen seventy, so, uh, another year will be fifty, it'll be fifty years old. But we think this is a great opportunity to continue the public-private partnership that was created then, really one of the first of its time, when you think about it. Now, now a common term, public-private partnerships, which we've, uh, studied at length, uh, and have come a long way. There've been successful ones, there've been unsuccessful ones, but we spent a lot of time studying, uh, the ones that have been successful, and also spent time, uh, learning from ULI, the Urban Land Institute, which has some very good materials out on, uh, the keys to having successful public-private partnerships. We believe, uh, we've had one for the last, uh, fifty years, that was a very complicated document, we've worked through lots of things over the, uh, fifty years. I go back to the very beginning, I was actually in, uh, in college when we were, uh, our family was working on this building, and spent some summers, uh, working on it. But we, we view it as having been a very successful partnership. We think this is a great opportunity to basically revitalize what we developed together fifty years ago. There've been, of course, many changes since that time, when you think of what's changed in the last fifty years, which was completed in nineteen seventy. First take, realize that when the project was done in nineteen seventy, fifty years ago, it was viewed at that time as a tremendous improvement over the existing train station, for those of you who are old enough to remember it. And it was a tremendous, uh, improvement over that prior station. Some of the highlights, I just want to highlight some of the, uh, changes I'd like you to keep in mind, as we have looked at the north side, the station, and tried to figure out what has changed in terms of the, uh, transportation, transportation centers over those, uh, fifty years. Tried to make it sort of relevant to what's actually happened in Greenwich. So the first thing I'd mention and think about how it's changed, maybe we can shift these around a little bit, make sure, just a little bit, everyone can see. Yeah, we'll be getting to the major slides in, in a minute. But, uh, there you have the, uh, the whole, uh, complex, what we're talking about, as Ben said, is really the redevelopment, just that north side, plus the, the need for a south station, uh, now, uh, which really wasn't present back, uh, fifty, uh, years ago. Going back a little deeper here, just for a second, it's mainly parking on the lower levels, big, uh, you know, tilted, uh, landscape, and the town had the two, uh, little parking lots, or portions of the parking lot, track two and track three there. And as, uh, Ben mentioned, uh, had a little history, the question was why not just add tracks two and three, and the, uh, the board of selectmen, at the time, said, oh, we prefer to lease in the air rights, we'd also like, uh, track one, so we could connect all one, two, and three, in case your project doesn't go anywhere, the town, and fail, and the town ends up, uh, owning that whole section along, uh, the bottom, and then they maybe could do something with that, as opposed to tracks two and three isolated, which, uh, really didn't have that much value on their own. Uh, but that's also why the rent, which sounded low at forty-two hundred dollars, the only rent was being paid on tracks two and three, because that's all the town owned. Track one was conveyed by us for basically no consideration to the town. So, uh, my uncle was smart enough not to, uh, agree to pay rent on something he already owned, that he'd just given to the, to the town. So that's, that's sort of the basic, uh, outline of, of, how, how the rent was set, uh, for, for tracks two and three, and it still is, so we're basically, uh, currently just paying, uh, rent for the air rights over tracks two and three, because that's what the town, uh, started with. Of course, now, significantly more valuable, that whole tract is, uh, valued, uh, by our appraisers at seven, and by the town's appraisers at ten million, everything below that, uh, dark, uh, black line. But in terms of, of, getting back to how things have changed since that original deal was done, thirty years ago, sixty-seven percent of the people getting on at Greenwich were commuters. Now it's about forty-eight percent. So about half the people getting on the train now aren't commuters. That means there's far more now use of the rail going within Connecticut, people going , uh, east, which relates to, uh, all the activity down now on the, uh, south side of the station that wasn't there, uh, fifty years ago, and therefore the need, uh, and the advice from Metro North and ConDOT for having a facility for the people that are, uh, using, leaving, driving on the, uh, on the south side, including, uh, people coming from New York who are reverse commuting. So they have, they have pushed very hard, that they think we ought to have a facility, a small station on the south side, and they project continuing growth, uh, going forwards. That's why, uh, they're, they're, that's why they've, uh, suggested that. In addition, the use of the train connection, and looking back now just to the commuting part, forget for a moment the continuing use, uh, going east, the people going into New York and reverse commuting out of New York, we see changing at about the time this project would be completed, if it's approved, because that's the year that's scheduled for the east side access to Grand Central to be completed, which is taking forever, frankly, it's going to be completed about fifteen years behind schedule, assuming it's completed in, uh, twenty twenty-two. For those of you who don't know, very quickly, Long Island Railroad, uh, will, will, once this is completed, it's called East Side Access, the Long Island Railroad will have a new line that comes in across the East River, and then down to Grand Central, so that the Long Island Railroad commuters can either go to Grand Central or continue to go to Penn Station. What that does, which really affects, uh, the New Haven Line, that whole development underneath the Grand, uh, Grand Central, it's a hundred feet below, uh, the station, I've been down through it, it's three hundred and fifty thousand foot project, and that under Grand Central, it's pretty unbelievable. In terms of how long it's taken, you gotta understand, it started with Al Dabato, who's the first person who, uh, who came up with this, how long this thing has taken to, to happen. But what's very exciting for the New Haven Line, and for all train stations along here, on this area, is they now have access to, uh, Penn Station, because when Long Island Railroad transfers a big portion of its commuters over to Grand Central, it frees up slots in Penn Station. How did we get there? It's the Amtrak line. The Amtrak line comes down through, right through here, right through Greenwich, and then about New Rochelle forks down and heads, uh, into Penn Station. Fortunately, a number of years ago, which I was actually involved with, when Metro North redesigned its new, uh, trains, they were designed so they could go on either the regular, uh, track into, uh, Grand Central, or the Amtrak track down into, uh, Penn Station. So starting in twenty twenty-two, they finished it then in twenty-three, this thing was well long, you'd be able to get both Penn Station and Grand Central on this, uh, commuting line, and the reverse commuters who are coming out, uh, from New York to come out to, uh, Greenwich and Stanford and so forth, will be able to come from either Penn Station or, uh, Grand Central, which is a huge change in terms of access to the areas of, uh, New York that have been growing dramatically, the whole Penn Station area, Hudson Yards, and all that, and so forth. So we see even more, uh, traffic generated by that development in New York, and this project would be completed right around that time. We also obviously happen to be believers in, that for the future in Connecticut, the use of rail travel makes a lot more sense to be improving that, while still trying to improve ninety-five to the extent, uh, you can. But, uh, this is a major new development that we think will affect the use of, of the train. So that is the, the major, big picture. Smaller, smaller picture, for example, in the train station itself, you don't, you don't need a ticket, uh, booth anymore. They don't sell tickets anymore. That whole thing that sort of blocks the, uh, when you walk up in the station, you look out of the trucks, it's a block, they don't need that anymore. Metro North said, it's gone, we've closed it, we're never going to use it again. You either buy your tickets on a little machine on the, uh, platform, or you, uh, just go online, you buy your ticket and walk up. So that means access to the train, where you're getting on, experience that everything that changes, and from an architectural point of view, uh, which we'll get into in a minute, allows you to do a much different, uh, opening experience, uh, without having that big, huge ticket office and stuff blocking, uh, blocking your, uh, your view, uh, out, uh, looking, looking south. So that, that's one of the smaller ways. The other thing that's happened is that the way people get to and from the station has dramatically changed. Now you have huge emphasis on Uber and Lyft, you have shuttle buses from, uh, the businesses and office buildings that were in the area that weren't there fifty years ago. You got people, more people, uh, biking, you're gonna have future, in the future, you're gonna have driverless, uh, carvers, that people are gonna be, uh, being dropped over. All these, we think of as, as sort of what the millennials prefer, too, it's a little different than, uh, what it was a few years ago, the train station just viewed as a place where commuters into New York got, uh, on, on. Also, we got more people living downtown now, and walking everywhere, so the pedestrian access, we think, can be, uh, approved dramatically. The other thing that's happened is a lot of the high-end retail stores and restaurants in the area have moved down the avenue, uh, over the last, uh, fifty years, so they're now quite close to the corner of, uh, Railroad Avenue, so in terms of being able to include that whole lower part of Greenwich Avenue, make it more vibrant, it's a terrific opportunity. There are already, uh, restaurants thriving, uh, down there that weren't, uh, weren't there fifty years ago. And another thing that's changed dramatically is the And another thing that's changed dramatically is the way in which people go to the movies now. And we started with one huge theater right there on the corner. Were able to adapt into small theaters as people went to multiplexes, but they're sort of constantly built in there with what's left of the, of the major theater. And that worked for a while, but what's really happened now is people are going to multiplexes and the new, the new modern luxury theaters, which are very successful, which Botai has been very successful for, if you haven't been, successful with, if you haven't been there. They're in Stanford now, they've done half their theaters, they're about to do the other half, they've done, or walked, converted to these luxury reserved seating theaters that serve food and beverage at the, at the theater. And one of the nicest pieces of it is you can get something reasonable to eat there if you're, if you're in a rush and you want to just have it be a sort of combined eating and movie-going experience. Or if you're at one of the restaurants around the corner, Mediterranean would be a three-minute walk, for example, to where this new theater would be placed. You have reserved seating. So it's like going to a theater in New York, you know exactly where your seat is. You don't have to worry if there are five of you or whatever. You can get a seat, and they're going to get the seats that you like. You know exactly which night you're going, you've picked that night, you've picked the seat that you want to have, you know when you have to be there. So eating becomes very pleasant before it, and it's an entirely different experience. And our research is showing that millennials particularly like that experience. A lot of them have, if they're wealthy, have movie theaters practically in their, in their basements and so forth. But if they have children, teenagers and school-aged children, they want to get out for a couple of hours, do something relatively separate from the family for the moment. They like going to, out for dinner and go to a movie. And the quality, the sound, the screens, the variety of offerings you get. And particularly, again, I keep emphasizing, the reserved seating, that they can pick which day they want to go. It's sort of a counterintuitive solution here to this movie-going because while you have a bigger theater because the seats are so large and reclining, you need more space, you actually have fewer seats in the theater in total than we have currently. But you end up with more people going when Botai is down there. Attendance goes up with fewer seats, that's the, that's the counterintuitive part. And the reason for that is people are looking, they say on Saturday night, looks like it's crowded, they're not going to get the seat they want. They say, oh, look on Tuesday night here, seats we like are open, let's set it up for Tuesday, meet you at the, the spouse comes home maybe from New York, they meet, and they go to the movie. I'm going into this in some detail because these are just some of the practical things in each of these areas that we've spent time focusing on, trying to anticipate the changes over the last fifty years and what the millennials are going to be looking for going forward. So in thinking about the best way to address these changes, we've also, as Ben pointed out, we've been working very closely with the town on this, particularly with Peter and Ben and Katie DeLuca from PMC, just getting their input on what Greenwich would like to see down in that area. We wouldn't be there, wouldn't be where we are today without their input. They are great partners in the sense of a continuing public-private partnership. And one of the biggest changes, I've already mentioned, the use of the rail travel. We've also been particularly fortunate to consult with Metro North directly, particularly Mike Schiffer, who's the Vice President for Planning for all of Metro North, and he attended our press conference on Tuesday. We've also worked very closely with the state through ConDOT, which really owns the platforms and the overpass and the canopies and all of, all of that. And we've gotten terrific support from the new Commissioner of Transportation, Joe Gielletti, who we've known from some of our other work on rail travel in the state. And Joe Gielletti is, is Commissioner of Transportation, he's got the roads to deal with, which he's working very hard on, but he understands that he needed a multimodal solution to this transportation problem. And Greenwich, you got to be working on everything. He's a big supporter of rail, and there's a pretty simple reason why he's a big supporter of rail. He used to be President of Metro North. He started out working on the trains at the lowest level, he knows every curve, he knows every, every single thing about the train. So he has been terrifically supportive. And his Bureau Chief of Public, Bureau Chief of Public Transportation, Rich Andreski, has been very helpful in advising us on what they see as the future needs for rail travel. And he came and spoke to, at our press conference on Tuesday as well. So they've been really helpful, both of them, on projecting future use of trains and travel patterns to the extent you can, looking forward. So armed with all that input and continuing to get more input, this is all happening in real time, we, we took a hard look at what had changed over the last fifty years. We looked at the best input that we could get on what should be happening over the next fifty years, all pretty complicated. We dumped that all on our architect, Byard Blinder Bell, who was the lead designer of the restoration of Grand Central Station. They're true experts on this, they've designed other transportation centers around the country. And we said, what better firm could we find to help us and figure out how we should redesign this transportation center than an expert for many, for many years on Grand Central? So we've brought them in, and of course, they have worked closely with Metro North also. So that's a huge benefit to this overall project. And we're very fortunate today, delighted to introduce Frank Prile from Byard Blinder Bell. He will present the project, do a far better job of it than I ever would. And he, these are renderings that are based on the plans that were submitted to PMC, as Ben was mentioning, on Monday. So Katie DeLuca and her staff are hard at work at reviewing them. They were nice enough to have given us informal comments, as she often does, before we finished them, so we could really get guidance from her, was there anything that looked to her like a major problem that we hadn't anticipated? Her staff is hard at work now looking at the project. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Frank to take you through the project using the renderings that we have assisted by the ones under my family who is here, Brian Harvey, my nephew, who has been working many long hours for us on this project. So Frank, another way to say your way.
Thanks. I'll start here, but I'll spend more time, actually, with surrendering time. Frank Prile, and I am a principal with the architecture firm Byard Blinder Bell Architects and Planners. I have been there almost twenty-four years. I know that because I started two weeks before my oldest daughter was born. But I began, I was hired to work on the restoration of Grand Central Terminal. And in many ways, I've really never left. I've been working there ever since on projects large and small. And I like to call it my third college degree, after an English degree and then architecture, because it has become such a source of inspiration and of lessons that we have brought into all of the work that we do, the work that I do personally. And it has formed many of the decisions and the designs that we have provided here and that I'll discuss in a little bit more detail this morning. Working on this project has been a great privilege, not only to be able to work with the Ashforce and their extraordinary family business, but then also all of the collaborators involved, not only on the design side, but then, as Daryl mentioned, the agency sides as well. But what it allows me to do personally is to address an issue that I recognized very quickly in my first visit to Greenwich when I came here, almost ten years ago, maybe, between eight and ten years ago, I was involved in the restoration, as Daryl said, the conversion of the former post office to restoration hardware. And in fact, made many presentations in this, in this area for that. I think we can all agree it was quite a successful project. As soon as I arrived in Greenwich, after having, of course, gotten on the train in Grand Central Terminal, I had to come, I had to find the station. Get through the station, wasn't really even aware that I had been in the station. And then when I got onto Railroad Avenue, as I made my way up the hill, it occurred to me that Greenwich really didn't begin until I got at least halfway up the hill. I said, all right, well, now this feels like Greenwich. Now this is the place that I've heard about and became much more familiar with as I visited on a more regular basis. So this project, I think, is an opportunity to bring Greenwich to Railroad Avenue, to complete the loop, if you will, to create a destination that will encourage people, and as Daryl alluded to a moment ago, to encourage businesses to come all the way down Greenwich, Arch Street as well to a lesser degree, but to create a continuity of retail and an experience that will benefit the town and create a destination that people in and of itself, to the station and to the retail I'll speak about and the theater, to come to this destination, to this place that will be a part of Greenwich. What I'd like to do is to go through the overall a little bit and identify some of the elements. It's easier to see. And then I will speak in a little bit more detail as I go through some of the detailed renderings. This is Railroad Avenue, steamboat and arch. I'll begin on the easterly side with a new park approximately thirty-eight-hundred feet. I'll show them in a little bit more detail. An entry pavilion that goes into two areas of retail with an opportunity, again, to continue retail down Greenwich and then along Railroad. What we call the centerpiece of the project, the functional heart, is the station building itself. Further to the west, the new modern multiplex theater, parking underneath. And then around the corner and up on the other side, on the south side, is a new station building, the South Station, which will be an amenity for those people who are going in the opposite direction or for those large numbers of people who are actually coming into Greenwich in the morning in inclement weather or people waiting for an Uber or someone to pick them up in the evening and they get off their trains coming from, from the east. Currently, this is the corner of Greenwich Avenue and Railroad. This is a movie theater, although we might necessarily recognize it as such other than because of its classic nineteen-seventies flat base concrete block bunker-like design. But it is in fact the theater that at the time was relatively state-of-the-art. It's not quite an auspicious place to be. There are services over here and a somewhat difficult-to-navigate stair that brings many, many commuters up to the platforms in the morning, those that park on the other side. On the south side will make their way up and around and essentially bypass the station completely as they go up to catch their trains. Here in this little detail here, we see how there was dumpsters and so forth and other service elements below, and people just make their way up very quickly to the platform above. Our proposal, as Daryl again described earlier, and as Ben as well, is a new thirty-eight-hundred-square-foot amenity, public park, which includes a plaza area, greenery with trees, elm trees, an opportunity for art on the corner, perhaps some kind of shared opportunity with the Bruce Museum, and a water feature here, based on other precedents and successful urban pocket parks in New York City, like Paley Park, for example, where the water becomes not only a visual feature, but then also an opportunity for white noise to kind of give an enclosure and a sense of place and comfort in a busy urban afternoon. We will improve the stairs that make their way up to the platform, make them much safer to navigate because people in a hurry as they're racing up to catch their trains. Immediately to the west, this new entry tower with clocks to actually identify and associate it with the train and its primary function. And this will be an entrance to the first of two component retail portions. In this first building, we're envisioning an opportunity for a food hall or other food and beverage tenant, other retail tenants, some perhaps existing to remain. The Olive Branch Restaurant is a possibility that that may stay. And then other retail immediately to the, to the west. This halfway, we will improve along the sidewalk with new storefronts, brick material, it's picked up as a precedent from other talking materials in a moment or so, but picked up from a vocabulary that's very specific to Greenwich, with new canopies above, but a great deal of visibility, which is very desirable to retail tenants to be able to see into and show the product within. So in other words, creating a continuity of retail that brings this experience at this high level of quality on Greenwich Avenue down and then over onto Railroad Avenue as well. New trees will replace those that are, are not indigenous at the moment and will provide shade and also an opportunity for outdoor seating, which would be a supplement to whatever food and beverage experience may be within the building itself. I will highlight, as we're changing, also an opportunity for green roof. This is an element that provides sustainability. We will use the roof area as a containment and a gathering for, for rainwater, which will be collected into a tank and then be used in a recirculating system for the water feature itself. This is the current station. Again, not particularly auspicious presence on Railroad Avenue, very dark and foreboding with a not very recent, a relatively recent refacing in, in the dryad system, but not particularly appropriate in terms of presence or visibility to Greenwich. The interior is also similarly, similar quality, it's very claustrophobic, close, not a place that you would really care to linger for very long, certainly not a place that celebrates one's arrival or departure from Greenwich, maybe. What we're proposing is a very different experience. It's a building that draws inspiration from Grand Central, of course, which is the source of the line and also the destination. It's a large grand space which allows and creates a civic presence, a place that will attract people, people will want to come, celebrate, we've been saying, also identify and speak to the town and the significance of the town. There's a great deal of visibility through. As Daryl mentioned a moment ago, we no longer have the incumbents or the need for a ticketing office, which blocked views and currently blocked views at the platform level above. That goes away, all of that's done digitally or state-of-the-art these days. It allows us the opportunity to bring natural light through and create visibility through this large portal, this door, if you will, to Greenwich and to destinations beyond. Presence of the street will be opened, will have a canopy that will create a much better drop-off experience in inclement weather. We've been working with traffic engineers and also the town to make the drop-off experience safer and more efficient. Entrance will be in at the street level, there'll be a stair, I'll show you in another interior shot and a view in a moment, that will make it very easy to get up to platform level. It's fully media accessible for people with disabilities. But the room will also not be, not also be a civic space, but it will also be a lobby, a place of gathering and of entry into the cinema above as well. So people will be able to come into the station. It gives it more of a twenty-four-seven presence, if you will. It's no longer strictly a train station, but it's also a place of gathering, fully reinforces its identity and its function as a public gathering space. People will be able to commit and go up, and then the lobby to the cinema is above on the second level here. It's flanked by retail on either side. Its materials are contemporary but timeless. The exterior is a very durable zinc material that's used in many current train stations and other transportation facilities in Europe. It's glazed on inside with insulated glass, again, for this ability to bring light in. There are sunscreen shading on the south side, cast a little bit of shadow so it's not such harsh light coming in from the south in the very middle of the day. And then on the right is the cinema, which we'll show in a little bit more detail. But here, we've been working with Botai, as Daryl has said, so there are approximately five, perhaps six, depending on the final layout of the new state-of-the-art theaters. Just like to show for a second if you weren't able to see. Just like to show for a second if you weren't able to see more clearly, the night view, which to us is just as important as the day view, because we conceive of this building as having more of a twenty-four-seven presence. It will be closed, it's for maintenance obviously, that schedule will all be worked out, but it will be open on a much more regular basis, much more accessible to the public than a current train station is today. And the idea that it will be a beacon, again, a source, you know, an iconic image for not only this location, for this development, but also for the town, something that people will recognize as they're coming through, even if they don't stop in Greenwich, you will be able to see it, it will attract your attention, and it will be a mental note that people will make that will say, that's Greenwich. Here, just a quick before and after, kind of drive home the experience of being in the station today. Again, there really is nothing that identifies it as a train station, it was certainly better than what was there at the time and it served its function, but it's definitely beyond its moment. So it needs to be replaced. This is what we're proposing, again, a space that draws inspiration from Grand Central. Obviously, we can't recreate nor will we ever try or intend to, but as I mentioned a moment ago, Grand Central has provided so many lessons, so much inspiration, so many things that we can learn from that we can apply here. And some of those ideas are a grand height, a sense of civic grandeur, a sense of significance and a place, a place that encourages people to gather, a place more importantly that functions efficiently. So that circulation and arrangement of retail, paths of destination, the way people move through it have all been very carefully considered and worked into a plan that we think is quite successful. Poses certain challenges, of course, because you're already at two different levels when you come in a grade and have to make your way up to the busy platforms above. Will provide a very grand and generous stair, very similar to what you would find in Grand Central. We also have elevators behind that provide EVA access, and we also were very careful to size them, large enough to accommodate first responders should there be an emergency at platform level. Some combination of retail below, again, we no longer have to have the ticket machines or any of those kinds of functions, so that provides us amenities that we can, newsstands, all of these kinds of retails are evolving, but there is an opportunity to provide those as support for the people who are coming or even people who may be walking through. Again, we're thinking of this not only as a station for commuters but as a destination. And above, easy access to the new cinema lobby above. In terms of materials and other inspiration from Grand Central is that they're very elegant, they're timeless, they're durable, but they're simple. They don't speak too much of themselves, they are locally perhaps sourced, they may be stones, they may be marbles, they may be travertine on the walls, but all of these materials are, speak to the quality of the design of the building and have a timeliness that will never actually become aged or absent. And will also age well in terms of maintenance which is required for the building itself. Now we've come full circle, all the way around to the south side. Anyone who has ever navigated this location on a busy four-thirty, five o'clock in the afternoon, or even worse perhaps when it may be raining, understands how difficult it is and how congested and really how dangerous it can often be to drive along this road and then to try and stop, to get around the parked taxis, to negotiate people who are walking across, to pick up someone who may be waiting or have arrived on a train or who may be actually being dropped off and then going over the overpass to get to the westbound side, to the city bound side. So what we have done is rethought the way all of this works, not only in terms of architecture and the needs for passengers and commuters, but then also very specifically for the people who are riding vehicles and how that works. And what we've done is we have taken this piece here, which is a buffer, kind of a boundary between the parking lot for the two office towers, and have moved it back. You'll notice that there are gratings here, this is because of mechanical limitations necessary for transformers and other electrical equipment that services the two towers behind. That will remain where it is, but we will take this piece and move it back further which will allow us two full twelve-foot wide lanes, standard highway width lanes that will allow drop-off, pickup, but then also a clear lane for passing by, so that there's no longer this choke point of congestion. Instead of the existing taxi building, which is essentially a private business, that space and that location will be converted to an entire of a new South Station, which relates immediately to what I call its older sibling across the way to the north. The material, we have the zinc exterior, we have the same open plan as well as glazing on north and south and a window shading here to modulate the amount of natural light that comes into that space. But it will be conditioned and heated so that it becomes a very pleasant place to wait either for trains that are going to the east or upon arrival from other transport trains The idea is that the materials, we can say it again, using the same zinc, so that there is an immediate visual connection between the north and the south buildings. And it's very clearly identified that this is a building that will be servicing, people that will be coming, no longer just a private business as well. A lot of this was motivated and worked with, as Daryl said a moment ago, Metro North understanding their new numbers of people, the demographics, the kinds of calculations that they had made anticipating the service that will be used by this building. Can we put the overall back up just a minute? I just wanted to conclude by saying that the development works well collectively, that's been thought through holistically so that all of the elements, pieces work not only independently for the tenants or for the actual individual uses, but they also work collectively as a common development. And the purpose here again is to create a building at the center, the key stud if you will of this development, that has an entirely different function than this train station that it has today. And we've put a lot of responsibility on this one small building, but we certainly believe that it has the ability to represent the best interests of Greenwich and to service the people who live here and who visit here in a much more efficient and appropriately. Very excited about this, I as an architect am very excited about being involved and look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thanks very much Frank. That really concludes our presentation of the project. I'd like to reemphasize that we really view this as more and more the gateway to Greenwich as rail travel becomes more and more popular. That's why we're not only popular but sort of demanded, been spending a lot of time on that ninety-five recently. And our conclusion, very strong conclusion is rather than take a very over-utilized method of transportation, we got to improve it, but to be able to be opportunities in under-utilized method of transportation, which is the rail is the right place to be focusing investment. We like investing in places with access to transportation. We think it lifts the entire area, we think it can also be vibrant for millennials, and we are very excited about this project and therefore of course are hoping that you will recommend this, am I. And I should have done a calculation this morning, I just realized, try to think of the number of different administrations we've worked with in this public-private partnership since this was all set up, and I'll count them up, but it's been a long and successful fifty years working with all the different administrations. And we know this is an election year, so whatever happens, at the end of the year we look forward, we're working with the next administration on what we think is a terrific opportunity for both for our complex and for the town overall. So thank you.
It's been about twelve administrations.
So you did the math, only twelve.
Maybe thirteen.
I just wanted to reiterate, one last comment is that although we patented approach this as a project as a partnership, however, the administration was very focused on protecting the taxpayers' interest, and I believe that the document that we were able to negotiate provides sufficient protection against the, for the taxpayer, at the same time leveraging an existing asset to provide the public benefit of the town. But as much as it was a partnership, we were constantly making sure that we do have an asset and trying to make sure the highest and best use of that asset. So we appreciate everyone's time and attention to this, I know it's just quite a lengthy presentation, and there are several of us here to answer any questions you may have.
I guess one of the, for Frank, his designing, I have to say, very complimentary to it, in taking into consideration so many different elements and facets of modern facilities, the one area that I'm interested in learning or understanding better is with regard to security. We're so security-conscious today with the way the world has changed, not necessarily for the better with issues of safety around incidents. Could you speak to that a little bit in terms of, I mean, I'll just share with you some of the comments I get from one particular resident who happens to be an official, had centered on trash receptacles. When the town changed the trash receptacle, she thought, we thought it was a great thing, they're contained, the material stays in them, it's not on the street, there's no opportunity for wildlife to get in, thinking, you know, again, very myopically perhaps, what if someone put a device in them? So things like that, or the other one, John knows the same person, talks about potential issues under the platform. Perhaps you could speak to like what elements get integrated to address just security of those issues, Daryl?
It's a very valid and I think interesting point. Obviously, since the events of nine eleven, I as a transportation planner and architect have been involved in many, many conversations and discussions, and in fact, many of the projects and the landmark projects that we work on have discussed very specifically how increased awareness of requirements for security can be integrated in an appropriate way into the design of the building, so that not only are you acknowledging the need, you are increasing security levels, but then also respecting the integrity of the architecture as well. That's kind of what I deal with specifically, the kind of work I do. So there's two approaches. One is that, one thing that we've changed is that our approach and our understanding of the needs for security have changed significantly, the way that we approach unidentified opportunities for to maintain it has changed and evolved since even in the now fifteen or so one years since nine eleven. The key word is presence. People know that the reality is that you can build a fortress, you can lock the doors, you can lock in the windows, but that's not necessarily going to reduce your risk if a person, or a person is intent to do some kind of damage. What you can do is discourage them by having twenty-four-seven security visibility. We will work with, a part of our team will certainly be a security consultant, who will speak to contemporary installations and security systems, so that there's twenty-four-seven recording and visibility for cameras and so forth. But then also the idea that this becomes a place where people are visiting on a more regular basis, the hours of operation are longer, so that there will be more people and more opportunity for vigilance and for oversight, there'll be coordination of course with local police departments, but the idea that there are people available and in place and so that there is less, there are less places to hide, there is less of a sense of emptiness or abandonment, we found that that has helped as well. But then the third thing, the final thing is also just more subtle ways of introducing security and presence, and that again is through vigilance, through having security systems, through having regular visits by local security consultants or by the police department, maybe even just having people come through on a regular basis, coordination with conduct at Metro North, since they're constantly and vigilantly protecting their own property and resources. So combination of more sophisticated vigilant systems with an increased twenty-four-seven presence on the site, we have found to be the best discouragement for this kind of, for dangerous activities.
Thank you, and I just want to say as another point, initiative that I contended with early on was the accessibility in the operation of the elevator, and I'm pleased to hear that that has been reconciled so that there's clear accountability of who will maintain and operate and give people who have limitations the assurance that they'll never be stranded in that facility, so thank you for that.
Sure, and I'll just add that, you know, under personal experiences, having worked in the Empire State Building in New York City, which is owned by a company run by a local, local family of some renown, there, when we restored the landmark interior lobby, we actually reduced the physical presence of security. We took away the airport-style x-ray machinery which made it, which was a very unpleasant and kind of intimidating experience to visit. What we did do was increase a concierge presence. We installed a security system that made sure they had an accurate record of who went in and who came out. So again, it was a subtle way of them increasing the amount of information that they had and their awareness of what actually was going on in their building relative to creating barriers or kind of coming up with some kind of architectural solution that might diminish or conflict with the architecture. Or even, more importantly, the experience of the visitors to that building. And that's the kind of thinking we'll bring here. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add to that quickly? We've been extremely security-conscious with our office buildings. A lot of the tenants and stuff we have are, have worked in New York or from New York, and we've actually created an experience that, from a security point of view, that we think replicates what you have in New York City. We were one of the first, the first project to go to actually card access in our lobbies, but we went to the most modern ones, the gate doesn't open a shot, you can just pass right through, we have the concierge in both buildings, we've gotten great compliments from our tenants, and first, a number of them, we have one tenant who's been with us one for fifty years, he's still in the building, believe it or not, and they said, we don't like it, but then after we completed it, they said, we really appreciate the additional security, and what we've learned is particularly frankly now with people working many hours, odd hours, night trading companies and so forth, the trade, frankly, women particularly appreciate having that additional level of security, a number of other buildings in the area have adopted it. And the other thing we've done with our parking system is more the increased density in our buildings, we have found the most modern way of doing a partial valet parking system down in the, in our parking levels, for the two tenants, it's not on A level of course, but it's on B and C level, which to Frank's point, creates a presence in the parking lots, and just having someone who's familiar, it's usually the same people in the garage, particularly at night, again, particularly for women and walking in a parking garage late at night or winter night or whatever, has been really appreciated. So we would follow the same approach of trying to find the most modern, least intrusive way to, working with Frank, to install the best possible security system for the two stations.
No, thank you, you answered my question very well, thank you. It's something I'm involved in on a regular basis.
No, as you know, I just got read into this on Monday, it's an important thing, I'd like to study it, and I'm glad we're not taking a vote at this time, that would be... I'm glad we're not taking any vote at this time, that would be unwise.
Yeah, I want to compliment Ben for your diligence in working with the Greenwich Plaza and Cashworth, putting together what probably is one of the more intricate arrangements. For the town and, you know, now half a century old, but I think it was well laid out in articulating the various aspects of it. And, you know, I hope that we can be of help to the other governing bodies. I know that the BET member were present on Monday, Tuesday, and now the R-Team. And I want to acknowledge, I see several members here. Miriam, I thought I saw Miriam, is she here? Hi there. Miriam. Joe, are you on our, Joe, you're on R-Team?
Uh, no.
Lucy.
Lucy's here.
Anna Kim. Peter. And Claire.
You always think I am or not.
Suzanne, I don't see that, but I was making a note, and I want to applaud you for coming because it's your time. But, you know, any...
Of course it is on.
Oh, of course. But any suggestions that you have for us, and you could direct through Ben. And, you know, those who are presenting to provide a forum for a presentation similar. I think everyone is committed and, you know, would welcome to do. So, you know, you could let us know afterward, but I think that's certainly going to be at the forefront of this, having a proper evaluation. So thank you. So thank you very much.
Yes, yes, yes.
So far, I think...
Yeah, I think we had, I think I know.
Yeah.
One I remember, for sure.
Well, you know what it is, we go, we get to, we get at the end, you know, I think we do wrong. So, I mean, we can reconfirm them, but I know we did, now that I checked it, I don't respect it.
Yeah, we pay another vote. I want to vote again on that, I think. Yeah, I see you have, we're on here, I hope you just have a spot.
No, we, so we got feedback that we can change provisions, and we need, we need to change the provisions. Right, so they have to draft a change, you know, that says, I'm two hundred and thirty, so. But, uh...
We have...
No, but we can make two, or we can make two.
What are you saying, you know?
Yes, we're trying to... We'd have to find something else in a little second, but... If you want to add one. As I was saying, if you want to turn and change the, the lane, which would need to add one. I was thinking two. It actually involved a very racist decision. So what happens around the meeting room?